I want to thank, I know we all want to thank all of you for being so patient. We do really appreciate you staying with us while we had to go into closed session. So I will call the Board of Commissioners back into open session. Commissioners, we're now at item number C, recognitions and presentations. So the first one that we have is Veterans Day proclamation, which is on your page 27. Whereas America was founded on the principles of liberty, opportunity, and justice for all, and whereas America has called on her men and women in uniform to protect our national security, to preserve our rights and freedoms, and to keep our democracy safe, and whereas through their steadfast defense of America's ideals, our service members have endured our country, ensured our country still stands strong, our founding principles still shine, and nations around the world know the blessings of freedom, and whereas on Veterans Day, November 11th, 2014, we recognize the men and women of our armed forces who valiantly defended those values, these values throughout our nation's history, and whereas we also remember and pay tribute to the American Armed Forces, whose courage and sacrifice secures our freedom and keeps the peace and defends our values around the world, and now therefore the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2014 as National Veterans Day, and call upon our citizens to always remember and honor our veterans and those who continue to serve this country so willingly to preserve the principles of justice, freedom, and democracy for all. May I have a motion to approve the Veterans Day proclamation?
Slow move.
Have a motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much. The next item we have is White Cane Awareness Day, and I just want to make a comment. This was presented to me by one of our citizens who falls into this category, and he asked if we would recognize. So the next proclamation, White Cane Awareness Day, 2014. Whereas the white cane serves as a mobility tool and widely recognized symbol of independence for those who are visually impaired, and whereas by act of U.S. Congress, the President authorized, beginning in 1964, the annual proclamation of October 15th as National White Cane Safety Day, and whereas state law acknowledges the freedom and independence of the visually impaired, and makes provisions for their access to and crossings of roads and intersections in North Carolina General Statute 20-175.2, and whereas individuals with visual impairments are active contributing members of society who create and join in opportunities within our communities and county, and whereas the Board of Commissioners acknowledge White Cane Awareness Day as set aside for reflection on the meaning of the white cane and in recognition of those who carry it, now therefore be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 15th, 2014 as White Cane Awareness Day in Cabarrus County, invites its citizens to celebrate the freedom and independence of the visually impaired, and furthermore urges motorists to be aware of visually impaired community members. May I have a motion to approve this proclamation?
Slow move.
Have a motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Next, Ben Rose is here.
Yes.
For child support incentive award. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. We're honored to be here tonight to present to you the child support incentive awards that we have received from the state. You can be very proud of this division of child support and the Department of Human Services and the work they're doing day in and day out to collect child support from absent parents, and Angela's going to share with you the achievement awards that we received this year.
Good evening, and thanks for having us, and allow us to come and share this with you. On August 27th, we were at the Child Support Conference that was held here in Concord, and we were honored to receive, be one of 11 counties to receive this achievement for meeting and exceeding goals in all five of our federal incentives and all nine of our self-assessment areas. We're very proud of that. We've continued to grow over the last four to five years tremendously, and we plan to continue to do that, and in this effort, we entered 616 new orders last year. We closed 471 and netted 145 new ones. We brought in $10,725,984 into our local economy. And I sometimes say we take it from some and give it to others, but at least we know that it's feeding and clothing and housing children, and we thank you for that.
And I'd like to just recognize, we have Susan Dillon and Lyndon McKinley in the audience. They're the two supervisors over this program. So between this management team and our 16 or so staff that we have working in these cases, they do a tremendous job, so we're very proud. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for all y'all's hard work. We really do appreciate it, and I know that those families and the children definitely appreciate it. Commissioner, next we have from IT Department, National Cyber Security Awareness Month proclamation. Debbie, did you want to say anything, or do you want me to just read the proclamation?
You can read it, but I just want to invite everybody to visit our Facebook page, our website, and our Twitter feed, because during the month of November, we have, I mean, October, we have been setting a security tip of the day, and we all lead digital lives, and we all need to make sure that we keep our infrastructure secure and our personal lives secure.
Thank you very much. So I will read the proclamation. Whereas we recognize the vital role that technology has in our daily lives and in the future of our nation, whereby today many citizens, schools, libraries, businesses, and other organizations use the Internet for a variety of tasks, including keeping in contact with family and friends, managing personal finances, performing research, enhancing education, and conducting business, and whereas critical infrastructure sectors are increasingly reliant on information systems to support financial services, energy, telecommunications, transportation, utilities, healthcare, and emergency response systems, and whereas the use of the Internet at the primary and secondary school levels in Cabarrus County enhances the education of youth by providing them access to online educational and research materials, and at institutions of higher education, the use of information technology is integral to teaching and learning, research and outreach, and service, and whereas Internet users and our information infrastructure face an increasing threat of malicious cyber attacks, significant financial and personal privacy losses due to identity theft and fraud, and whereas the U.S. Department of Homeland Security has established the Office of Cybersecurity and Communications and devoted resources within it solely to support the strengthening and securing of the country's cyber infrastructure at the state, local, tribal, and territorial levels, and whereas the Stop, Think, Connect TM campaign is a national effort coordinated by a coalition of private companies, nonprofits, and government organizations to raise awareness about cybersecurity among all digital citizens, helping them to stay safer and more secure online, and whereas the Multi-State Information Sharing and Analysis Center, a division of the nonprofit Center for International Security, provides a collaborative mechanism to help state, local, territorial, and tribal governments enhance cybersecurity, and the Cabarrus County Information Technology Services Department provides a comprehensive approach to help enhance the security of Cabarrus County, and whereas maintaining the security of cyberspace is a shared responsibility in which each of us has a critical role, and awareness of computer security essentials will improve the security of Cabarrus County information infrastructure and economy, and whereas the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, the Multi-State Information Sharing and Analysis Center, the National Association of State Chief Information Officers, and the National Cybersecurity Alliance have declared October as National Cybersecurity Awareness Month, and now therefore be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim the month of October 2014 as Cybersecurity Awareness Month in Cabarrus County, encourages citizens to visit the aforementioned websites, as well as the county's website, and to learn more about cybersecurity, putting that knowledge into practice in their homes, schools, workplaces, and businesses. May I have a motion to approve this proclamation?
Slow move.
Have a motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And next we have the Weatherization Day proclamation. Kelly, did you want to say anything, or do you want me to just read the proclamation?
You can't just read it, but I did want to make our citizens aware that this program is available for low-income families. If people are interested in making application, they can call our office at 704-920-2141 to get more information.
Thank you. Okay, proclamation of Weatherization Day 2014. Whereas October is National Energy Awareness Month, and October 30th is designated as National Weatherization Day, and whereas the County of Cabarrus has a longstanding commitment to conserve its resources and to help low-income households through its Weatherization Assistance Program, and whereas the state of North Carolina has administered the Weatherization Assistance Program since its inception in 1976, providing a variety of state and federal resources through numerous community action agencies, housing authorities, and departments of local government that serve people in every county in the state, and whereas it is important to recognize the importance of those programs that ensure that all residents, especially those living at or below the federal poverty level, have the opportunity to live in energy-efficient, healthy, safe, and comfortable homes as provided for by the Weatherization Assistance Program. Now therefore be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 30th, 2014 as Weatherization Day in Cabarrus County, and urge all citizens to join in this observance. Do I have a motion to approve this proclamation?
Slow move.
Motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all very much. Next we have informal public comments. Our first speaker, again, when you come up, you may need to adjust the microphone to, for your convenience. Our first speaker is Lydia Banther. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Lydia Banther, and I'm alumni of Rowan Cabarrus Community College. When my daughter was just six months old, I started back to school at Rowan Cabarrus. For those of you who have children, you know this is a very busy time. You know diapers, starting solid food, sleep schedules, if you're lucky to get any sleep at all. Although, it was one of the craziest times, I saw it as a beginning for me and my family. I did not want to be working in a call center and answering phones. I wanted a fulfilling career. While I was attending Rowan Cabarrus, I was helped with scholarships from the college's foundation to help offset the cost of books. Then during the two of my final semesters, I worked as a co-op student actively integrating my newly gained knowledge. I successfully completed my education with Rowan Cabarrus in May 2013, earning two associate's degrees in office administration and medical office administration. I now am gainfully employed, using the knowledge I acquired while at Rowan Cabarrus. I'm also pursuing my bachelor's degree. This college has helped inspire me to never stop learning. I am here tonight to talk about the need for an advanced technology center in Cabarrus County. While I am not personally pursuing an advanced manufacturing degree, I can attest to the high-quality education that the college is providing to both myself and my classmates. Students are depending on the college's leadership to provide a 21st century education and prepare us for the jobs of the future, and we need a place that can properly train the workforce for these jobs. Having family in other areas of the country, I can honestly say, we are so lucky to have such a dynamic college right here in Cabarrus County. People pay a lot of money for private colleges and universities to enjoy the small classes and individual attention that we receive at Rowan Cabarrus for only a fraction of the cost. I want to stay in Cabarrus County, where I have lived, and stay in this community where I have worked. I believe this advanced technology center will help many other students to do the same, stay right here in Cabarrus County. I am proud to be a graduate of Rowan Cabarrus Community College. I think the college is worth the investment. I hope that you will see the students of Rowan Cabarrus Community College are worth the county's investment. On November 4th, I'll be headed to the polls to vote yes for the $9 million bond referendum for the advanced technology center titled Cabarrus County Community College Bonds. I hope you'll flip your ballot over and do the same for the future of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bill German. Thank you. Welcome.
Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My topic is Code of Ordinances, Section 46-2, Use of Firearms in Cabarrus County. Hopefully you have already received a copy of my memo, which I had sent to each of you. In addition, I sent a copy of the ordinance 46-2, and I included in there a map which identifies the critical area which I'm addressing this evening. My wife and I have property on Highway 73 East and Moose Lodge Road. Concord Moose Lodge also has property on Moose Lodge Road. Last fall, and again this year, they have held a turkey shoot, where the participants shoot shotguns at targets in an effort to win a turkey. Last year's event took place during November and December. This year, they have started in October and continued until Christmas. At times, it sounds like a war zone. Recently, I asked Sheriff Riley if this activity is legal, and he had to contact the county attorney for an interpretation of the code, because the code is written in the manner that cannot be reasonably understood by the average citizen or by the sheriff. As the code is currently written, it establishes two distinct classes of citizens. Some folks are protected by the code and some are not. This is discrimination, since all citizens are not treated fairly and equally. I'm sure when the code was originally written, the major consideration was to allow hunting within a rural area of the county as defined by North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commissions. I do not believe it was meant to support a firing range. There are nine homes within a county area and 10 homes within the city of Concord that fall within the restricted area as defined by the code. I am at a loss to understand why this event is not in violation of the code, until a new and revised code is written. I ask, I am asking for an immediate amendment to the code to restrict the discharge of any firearm within 500 yards of any residence unless it falls under the Act of Hunting Game as defined by the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission. The present condition is a safety issue and jeopardizes human life within the surrounding areas. Thank you for your time and your consideration in this important matter.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lamar Barrier, and I think you want Londa to come up with you. We appreciate you letting us know that.
The Cabarrus County employees have a charitable campaign called the Cabarrus Helping Hearts and Hands, better known as CH3. Most of you all are aware of that. This year, there was several different drives that, it's not just money, several different drives that the employees have, and there was just one for coats, and it was from Lamar, for Lamar's Coats for Children. That's part of the Junior Charity League with Chrissy Hayes is who he works with on that, I'm sorry. And the county accumulated quite a few coats, and Lamar wanted to come tonight and just talk to you all a few minutes about how much he appreciates it. There are several of the CH3 committee members here, Anita Tucker, Heather Starnes, Tiffany Settles. I think that's all that are here for right now, but with that, I will turn it over to Lamar.
Good evening. This program started about a year ago, and I'm watching my time. Saw children get out of the cars without coats on, it was about 38 degrees, and got my brain thinking that's a dangerous thing, but something needed to be done for the children that did not have coats. So we went with Merle Hamilton, I went to the Junior Charity League, and we partnered with the Junior Charity League, and Ronnie Boone was in the school administrative office. But the county employees collected, I think it was a little over 75 coats, and probably 30 or 35 of those were new coats, so they had to spend their money on those. And being in government quite a while myself, I know sometimes we don't get the recognition to the employees, but they did this on their own, and I appreciate everything they've done, and appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those are all the cards that I have at this point for informal public comments. Commissioners, next we have the Consent Agenda. Item number one, we removed, so we would be, only consent agenda is what's listed on your, as two and three. May I accept a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
Slow move.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, under New Business, Commissioners, first item is the Transportation, DHS Transportation Division Rural Operating Assistance Program. Bob? We do need to hold a public hearing. Do you want to say anything before the public hearing?
You can have the hearing first, Lee.
Okay. Okay, we have a, let me get to that on my agenda. Okay, this is called, also known as ROPE. It's a state-funded transportation grant program. So at this time, I would open a public hearing for anyone that would like to speak for or against the ROPE grant. See no one, I will close the public hearing. Okay, do you speak now?
Thank you. We're here with our annual ROPE grant from the state of North Carolina. The ROPE grant covers transportation for three specific areas, the rural general public, elderly handicapped, and the employment. This year, for all three programs, we are going to be receiving $173,416. That is a reduction of $37,000 from previous year. We ask that you accept the grant, the associated budget amendment, and resolutions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments at this time on this particular item? Hearing none. May I have a motion to accept the fiscal year 2015 ROPE grant award and adopt the fiscal year 2015 certified statement and related budget amendment?
Slow move.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, is a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number two, DHS Economic Services Enhanced Rate Plan. Ben?
On October 6th, we did present to you a detailed presentation regarding our proposals for both short-term and long-term solutions regarding the use of our 75% enhanced rate that we have. At that time, you did approve some conversion temp staff force, 15, which we do appreciate. We actually had about 11 of them start today, so that was nice that we could get that turned around very quickly, and they were in training, starting today, and we'll have them up and going as soon as we can. So we do appreciate that. And the second part of the item that we were presenting was more of a long-term strategy regarding staffing, our staffing needs, and as you recall, we presented, we did a formula that the state had sent us that showed our need of 15 processors, just alone processors, to help us continue to deal with the volume and caseload size that we have, and we were requesting four new positions as part of that 15 need, looking at both using the 75% money that we have so that we could fund it for this year, and then start to look at the landscape as it evolves over the next few months to see, you know, how needs may fluctuate. So we didn't want to put it out there for the whole gusto. There was a concern about, from Commissioner Osterreit, which we have hopefully addressed for you in terms of funding the temps that we had budgeted last year. We, with the help of Pam Dubois, we did have done a revised budget amendment reflecting additional revenues that we will be pulling down from the additional staff that we're adding. It's like a big cycle. You bring more staff in, then you can pull down more revenue so that we will net out the cost of the county for the temps that we have budgeted, and then they will continue to help us on the upfront world of intake and applications. They are basically doing the applications for us, and when I say doing them, they're taking them, they're meeting with the people that come in, and then they're sending back to our workers that are processing those applications. So that is helping our workers focus on processing, and we will continue to use them in that capacity for the next few months, and then the conversion temps will continue their act of taking the data from the old system and put it into the new system for us for about 24,000 cases that we have. So that's what we're here for tonight, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have. I have Diane Gredeley with me here tonight. She is the interim program administrator for economic services, so she's here as well if you have something that's above my head.
Okay, Commissioners, do you have questions? I just want to verify, and Susan's here. Susan's. Okay, now, or you can, one of y'all can answer at the, or you can answer too. At the work session, we approved the temporary. So tonight you're asking, because we've already done that, so
Correct.
This item is to approve the four additional positions?
These are permanent positions, correct.
Four permanent, I just want to make sure.
That's my understanding.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to verify. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioners, I'll open it up for any comments or questions that any Commissioners have at this time.
If I can point out one thing, there was $170,000 worth of equipment that was on the initial request for the temps and for the four workers, and we were able to get that down to a little over $90,000. So I just want to point that out.
That's good. Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Okay.
Just one question. On the total cost for all the temps and these new positions, I think on here, 848, so that's actually going to be 70, somewhere in that ballpark with that, and then the additional reimbursement that we get by changing from 50 to 75, or by them, was almost a million dollars?
It was about, we projected about 970. Yeah, and that's what we're using to upfront all these costs.
Right.
And then we'll be able to pull down additional revenue from those costs that will help us to address the previous temps and help net that cost out as well.
So our actual expense is really not going to increase?
It's going to be very, no, the actual net expense will not increase for this fiscal year.
But our capacity will increase significantly.
Correct. The conversion temps, again, are really deflecting work off of the regular staff by allowing them to, you know, avoid having to do the conversion when they do a review, which is a huge
Right, which all of that hopefully avoids us from being in a hole this year like we've experienced in the past.
We hope. The ACA opens up November 15th. So we'll see.
I hope so, too.
We will pray and hope, and we'll do all that we can.
Just compliments, I mean, you folks have had a tremendous stressful, I want to say year, but it's been longer than a year, and we appreciate you hanging in there and doing the work and getting us out of that hole that I referred to earlier.
Thank you.
And as we've discussed before, we're fully aware that that's not a unique position. That's not unique to Cabarrus County. It's a statewide situation, but
There are still currently over 4,000 untimely Medicaid applications statewide. Now, we are in much better shape. We have less than 50 was the last number I saw, so we're in good shape there. When the ACA opens back up, I think we did report on this, we are projecting probably just as many, if not more, applications this year, so we'll be dealing with that cycle again.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, we're being asked to have them, yeah, to vote, to make a motion to adopt a budget amendment to add four full-time positions, four permanent full-time positions, and the, add the positions and adopt the budget amendment that goes along with that. So do I have a motion at this time?
Slow moved, and that does include the full amount, the workstations and so forth. Yes, I would make that.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, there is a motion to adopt the budget amendment. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
We're not going to have any discussion about that.
Oh, no, I was already asked, sorry. I thought you had
No, I just don't think it makes very much sense. I think this is one-time money that we're going to get. It's not going to be long-term money, and so when you start funding long-term continuing obligation positions out of one-time money, I think that the taxpayers are going to be on the hook for that money. I would like to see, I think your staff has worked tremendously hard, Ben. The way that we've been compensating the staff for all of their extra hours is with comp time, and so you've got this scenario where your staff is now regularly circulating out of the office to fulfill their comp time, leaving more burden on the people that are there, and now we've hopefully put an end to that by funding 15 new positions of temps, so they will not be accumulating comp time, which will reduce the burden on all of your staff really, because you'll have more people there, and I'd like to see how that works out a little bit before we go ahead and fund four new positions. I think that there's some interplay that we need to settle in, I think, a little bit, and see how these regulations impact us in the long term, and we funded, I think, the short-term issue, which is the 15 temps that we funded, and I just think it's premature at this time to fund four new positions with money that's not going to be recurring money.
And I would just, for feedback purposes, I would say that, you know, the four positions are based on, again, the volume, the regular volume that we have. The conversion is a, you know, it has an end date in terms of that, but the 15 positions that the formula stated that we needed is based on our time standards, the work that we have, the number of staff that we have, and the volume that we have. So it's basically, it is a long-term resource need that we have to have more hands to do the work that we actually are experiencing, because if you recall, the caseload size, we've had about a 40 to 43% increase in our caseload size over the past five years, but our staff have not grown to meet those demands. So that's basically the difference between the temps and the permanent staff and what we're searching for there.
Okay. Are there any other comments, Commissioners? We do have a motion and a second to adopt the budget amendment. We do have a motion and a second to adopt the, the budget amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries three to two. Okay. Commissioners, at this time, I would like to amend our agenda. So I would like to make a motion to amend our, amend our agenda to, for the consideration of settling the mediation between the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners and the Cabarrus County Board of Education. May I have a motion to amend our agenda? Or I'll make a motion to amend the agenda, sorry. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor of amending the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, at this time, I would like to read some information and, and follow that up with the motion. As many of you know, the Cabarrus County Board of Education and the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners have been in mediation concerning the fiscal year 15, 16 budget. The Cabarrus County Board of Education, I'm going to read the term sheet. The Cabarrus County Board of Education and the Cabarrus County Board of County Commissioners proposes to resolve their budget dispute by agreeing to the following provisions. Number one, the Board of County Commissioners will match 100% of the state's salary increase for locally funded employees, which is $353,390 in local current expense funding by the Board of County Commissioners, and was already allocated to the Cabarrus County Board of Education in September of 2014. Number two, Board of County Commissioners will provide funding for 406 new students, which includes both charter school and LEA students, at the, the amount of $1,609.82 per pupil, for a total of $653,586.92 in local current expense funding, of which $434,662 has already been allocated to Cabarrus County Board of Education and the Board of County Commissioners' current budget. Item number three, the Board of County Commissioners will provide an additional $2 million in capital expense funding for the construction of the new Odell Elementary School, commonly referred to as Odell 3 to 5. Item number four, Board of County Commissioners will provide additional funding to cover the Affordable Care Act costs for 39 substitute teachers, which is an additional $211,965 in local current expense funding. Number five, the Board of County Commissioners will provide additional capital expense funding to address leaking roofs at Northwest Middle School, Rocky River Elementary School, and Wyancoff Elementary School, in the total aggregate amount of $4,213,410. So at this time, commissioners, I would make a motion to allocate $6,659,62.49 made available through the June 30, 2015 budget, as presented in the financial settlement proposal. That amount will fund additional funding for the new Odell School construction, again, in the amount of $2 million. Northwest Middle School roof of $1.2 million. Rocky River Elementary School roof of $1,494,205. One, that was Rocky River. Wyancoff Elementary School roof of $1,509,205. We also will need to move into contingency for schools, $133,478.74, and to move into improvements, construction of school facilities, in the amount of $312,173.75. This includes all of the items on the term agreement, which I just read. And we also would need to approve the appropriate budget revisions and the project ordinance updates. So at this time, may I have a second to that motion?
Second.
There is a motion and there is a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay.
Chairman Poole, I'd just point out, I think on the Wyancoff Elementary School, you may have stated the amount slightly off, and just for the record, make sure we've got that. I think you said $1,509 instead of 519.
I'm sorry if I misspoke. You're correct. It's 500, $1,519,205. I apologize. Is there any other comments at this time for, on this motion?
Chairman Poole, I have a, a comment. First, let me say thank you to both you and Commissioner Burge, Vice Chairman, for, for your hard work on this. I know that you spent a lot of time on it, and I know that our staff, our county manager and, and our assistant county manager, Mr. Bois, spent a lot of time on this, and, and I, and I thank all of you for your time on this. I think that this is a bad deal for the citizens of Cabarrus County with respect to one particular item. I think most of this seems fair, but this additional $2 million for construction to the new Odell School, I think, once again, is the, is the school board really putting facilities above, above teachers and above students? You know, this is, at, at $20 million, that's several million dollars more than what the most expensive school in Cabarrus County history has ever cost for, for an elementary school. And as I talked about in the spring, Mecklenburg County just built three schools for 800 students, the same amount that they're building here, this 3 to 5, for 11.75 million on average. And so they're talking about, I think about $15 million for an apples-to-apples comparison on, on that. I got a note from one of my neighbors, and, and her son is a, well, goes to Arbrown McAllister, and they have this campaign. It's called Invest in Your Child Campaign. And it says, "At Arbrown McAllister Elementary School, we want every student to be engaged in learning. To benefit our students and to make up for the lack of funding from the state, we need to raise $19,200 to pay for instructional assistance for the 2014-15 school year." And so they don't have instructional assistance, and to fix that, they need $19,200. And so instead of funding things like that, our school board spends $20 million on a new elementary school. And I think what people would really rather have is teacher assistance at their school. I would also point out Mount Pleasant, the, this money was originally budgeted to go, the purpose of the $3.9 million was to go to Mount Pleasant Middle School so that they would have full funding. And it seems to me that, once again, the school board is putting the western side of the county ahead of places like Mount Pleasant Middle School. This would have provided them full funding for their middle school. And, you know, I, I note that just a couple months ago, they didn't have stalls around their bathrooms, and yet, right now, the school board is more concerned about spending $2 million at this 3 to 5 school. And as I mentioned, $3 million more than any elementary school ever built in this county. So Mount Pleasant, this is your money that the school board would rather see go to this new school than to your school. And so now what's going to happen is, your school is not going to get funded, and you will be put back in the queue somewhere, and you won't have the money. This is the first of many schools that this county is going to build. We have not built a school in several years. We've got this school coming, we've got Mount Pleasant, we've got Royal Oaks, probably Arbrown McAllister, we've got Coltrane Webb, we've got a variety of different schools that have a lot of needs. We probably even have a high school that's coming due at this area to set this precedent of building the most expensive middle school, I'm sorry, elementary school, as your very first school, I think, is going to put the citizens of this county in tremendous debt. What we really need right now are leaders who are willing to look at things prudently, keep costs to an area that we can build to level eight schools. Everybody wants a great school. If you give people a level eight school, and you can save the difference between an eight and a 10, and put that into a level three school, all of a sudden, you'll start really bringing up the quality of every school, as opposed to what we have now where we have, you know, Mount Pleasant Middle Schools that don't have stalls around the bathroom, and, well, they fixed that, but, you know, some of the new schools with translucent roofs. So the, the other thing that I would say is, this 3.9 million, what we needed was about $5 million on a recurring basis to fund that short-term financing. And if you'll recall, on a school like Connapolis City Schools, their new middle school, if you did the short-term financing of $22 million, instead of paying back, I think it was $11.5 million in interest, you end up paying back about $1 million in, or $1.5 million. So it was literally a savings of $10 million for the county if you could borrow that money for five years versus 20 years. And so this funding, that 3.9 million, we were going to give it to Mount Pleasant this year, but it was recurring funding. So next year, that would have been available to pay for the debt service on that five-year note, and it would have been available every year thereafter. And so really, by keeping that funding available, as opposed to giving it out on a continuing basis, we could have saved the citizens $10 million. So those are my comments. I, I think it's worth pointing out, we have taken a lot of heat over these budget reductions, and, and that money is what's being used now to fund this mediation. So I, I just think that that's interesting, that, that we took so much heat about, and now it's being very purposeful and, and settling this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments that anyone would like to make at this time?
I would say, out of the, the list that we received this evening, number one that was on the list, you know, we had already funded that during our budget process, so, you know, I, I don't even like to see that on the list, because that was settled during our budget discussions and by our budget vote. But I do, I do have an issue with the additional $2 million for the new Odell Elementary. Originally, that school was going to be a K through 5 school. That's what the money that was requested from us was going to be built, a K through 5, and now it's going to be a 3 through 5 school, however, the same budget. And I would think that if you're going to reduce the school size by two grades, that the budget should also reduce. Also, you know, I'd been given the comment from some of the school system officials that we're going to try to eliminate smaller schools and go to larger schools. And by building a 3 through 5 grade school, I think that's a step in the opposite direction by building smaller schools. So I, I'm fine with everything else on the list. I just have the issue with the $2 million for the new Odell Elementary, the 3 through 5 grade school. I would like to see this money go towards Mount Pleasant Middle School. You know, tried to work hard on getting that project accomplished, and I would like to see these funds go to that. And with this agreement, that will mean that there will not be a Mount Pleasant Middle School replacement for a very long time. And for that, I'm disappointed, and that's the reason I cannot support this, is for that simple fact of term number three.
Are there any other comments at this time?
I've sat through 20-some hours of mediation with the school board. This is a small amount of actual money that they wanted to not sue the county. And it makes sense to me to do this rather than put the county through two years of lawsuits and court systems and paying lawyers for the next two years. I think this is the best deal we could get. They didn't get what they wanted, but this is the least amount that we can negotiate and get them to approve. And with that said, with setting through all those mediation meetings, I'm going to vote for it.
Do you want to add anything at this time? I would like to thank you for your hard work in the mediation. I'd also like to thank the deputy county manager. I'd like to thank the county manager, and I'd like to thank our attorney. You all provided lots of information and lots of resources and help in, in getting to this point. And I sincerely appreciate all of your hard work, because you worked very hard to hammer this out. And I think that's what, that's the way that I came away from it. I think we, we all worked hard to, to try to come to an agreement.
I appreciate what everybody done, county manager, assistant county manager, county attorney, you. I think this is best for the county. And I, I don't, I don't, I don't like it, to be honest with you. I don't like it. But, but if it prevents a lawsuit, I think we'll all be better off.
Okay, if there are no other comments at this time, there is a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries three to two. High commissioners, the next thing we have on our agenda is appointments to boards and committees. The first one we have is the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee.
Chairman Poole, may I just ask you, accounting, housekeeping?
Oh, thank you.
Do we need to take off four and five?
I appreciate it. Thank you. For items number four and five under new business, I appreciate that. I just skipped right on by. I apologize. Due to the motion that was just passed, items four and five would not need to be considered because those are the pockets of money that the previous motion will use to fund. Thank you for pointing that out to me. I appreciate it. That's correct, Rich? That that's all we need to do?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I thought. I just want to make sure. Thank you for pointing that out. Okay, now to appointments. We need a motion to remove Dora Fulton and Mary Stewart from the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee roster and thank them for their service, and a motion to appoint LaShonda Sparks to the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee for a one-year term ending October 31, 2015. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. To the next one. The next is Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. At this time, I accept a motion to appoint Cameron McKnight from Connapolis City Schools as a student under 18 representative to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council for a two-year term ending June 30, 2016, and a motion to appoint Hunter Moore, Cabarrus County Schools, as a student under 18 representative to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council for a two-year term ending June 30, 2016, including an exception to the multiple service provision of the appointment policy. Do I have such a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, we have the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. Sorry, I need my iPad to catch up. May we, may I have a motion to reappoint Mary Boss to the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee for a three-year term ending October 31, 2017?
So moved.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Commission, commission, sorry. Commissioners, you have a number of reports in your agenda. We now have time for general comments by board members, and I would like to make an announcement for everybody. Please join us at Vietnam Veterans Park dedication on November 15. It is at 10:30 in the morning, and if you will go to the county's website under Hot Topics, you can get more information about that event. We'll mention it again at our work session, but I would like to remind everybody, today, the dedication will be November 15 at 10:30. So at this time, are there, commissioners, are there any comments that, any general comments from any of the board members? Okay, seeing none? May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.[1788.71]